Call the Tuesday, November 9th, 2021 organizational meeting as well as regular meeting to order. If you would all stand with me please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice.
And the treasure hunter pledge?
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you, you may be seated. Board members, we have an action item to take first this evening. As everyone is aware, our longtime attorney has retired, and after the interview process, we have issued the invitation for Molly Shadock to join our team up here. So we have a recommendation from the superintendent, please.
We recommend the board approve the negotiated legal representation agreement with Sniffin and Spelman P.A. as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll and Mr. Kelly. Any conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five zero. Welcome, and we invite you to come up and join us.
I am now at this time going to call for nominations for chairman-
Mr. Superintendent.
-of the school board. Mr. Ingersoll?
I nominate Dr. Donna Mills.
Second.
Okay, I have a nomination for Dr. Mills. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, then the nominations are closed, and all those in favor of Dr. Donna Mills as chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Congratulations, Dr. Mills.
Thank you, Superintendent Jen. Thank you, school board, for having the confidence in me to serve as chairman for 2021-22. Now, we are going to go right into our vice chairman, and I'd like to start out a nomination. I nominate Jennifer Richardson. I would love to have her as my vice chair. I can assist and help tutor her in what chairman duties are here at the school board, and so I nominate Jennifer Richardson. And are there any other nominations?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to nominate Troy.
Okay, we have both Jennifer Richardson and Troy Ingersoll up for not as nomination being nominated. We will first start with Ms. Richardson. All in favor for Ms. Richardson to be the next chairman? Please raise your hand and verbally say aye. Oh, aye. We've got two here, okay. Now we go to Mr. That we have a two zip two, two, three vote here, so we will now, I guess, automatically turn it to Mr. Troy Ingersoll, but I just to be, just to give a vote there, let's do that, okay? So we want, again, for the hands to be raised and verbally say aye if you would like to nominate, have Mr. Troy Ingersoll as our vice chair.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it looks like we have three zero vote. Mr. Troy Ingersoll, you are the vice chair for this year. Okay, we're going to go move right along to appointing appointment of members to committees. And again, I know that I have the ultimate authority to make appointments for the upcoming year, but of course, we want to discuss, make discussion. Last year, I was very concerned about the first committee, which is the Children's Service Council Committee. This is an organization that is board that we all know is an extremely important organization in our community. My problem and where I'm disturbed at is that there are no, there are no minorities on that board, and it has not been any minorities on that board in over a decade. Last year, there was none. This year, there is none. Our chairman of last year, Ms. Harley, appointed herself, and I have done some follow-up on that and have found that CSC recommends that anyone that's serving on that board serves for two years. So with that being said, I definitely would not interfere with Ms. Harley serving on that committee for the next year. She's already served one year, and next year will be a full two years, I believe, in December. But I am still very strongly wanting to have minorities on that board. I have been told that our governor in the past 10 years has not appointed any minority at all, whether it be a Hispanic or African-American or any other minority, and we as a school board, I believe, should be the first examples to our children to ensure that we have just fairness, you know, equity and diversity. And so I am asking the board, for a long time, Ms. Hensley served, I believe she served for over 20 years on that board. Now that she's no longer there, I would like for us to consider every two years putting someone on rotating that position, and of course, consider making sure that African-American, Hispanic, whatever we can do here as a board, that we put a minority on that, that, that committee. They, they work with the majority of children of poverty as well as children, the majority of their children, that they serve, the agencies they serve, work with children that are either African-American or Hispanic. So they need to, we need to have representation, proper representation on CSC. I have been told that several times minorities have been placed on that board, or have been asked to be placed on that board by Children's Service Council to the governor and have been rejected every time. So this is a problem, and I'd like for us as a board to be able to correct that problem. We have the authority to have one person appointed on that board. So I wanted to have this conversation. I wanted to hear other board members' thoughts on it, but I would like to make a new protocol in this area. And then once we get this problem improved, then maybe just rotate every two years a different board member so that we can all have the experience of serving on the CSC board. So please let me open up the floor to board members and your opinions on this.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think this is the proper time to talk about a brand-new procedure. That would be done when we discuss all of our procedures and bylaws going forward, but I certainly hear what you're saying. I just don't think it's an opportunity to change the procedure at this particular meeting.
Yes, ma'am, and I understand that, Ms. Harley, so I'm just wanting to get some opinions from other board members as well. And I do hear you when you say you understand what I'm saying.
I'm opening up for a conversation during a workshop, but, but obviously, Ms. Harley's going to be it, but you know, there's just some other issues that need to be discussed that I prefer to do during a workshop rather than now.
Okay, well, you all know how, how strongly I feel about it from the, from last year, and I will stick to my guns at the workshops in this area.
Well, okay, I'll discuss it now.
No, I look forward to the workshop.
Okay, because I just didn't want to pitch you on the spot.
We don't want to be out of, you know, we'll wait for a workshop, but I want something like that to come up very soon where we can discuss this important issue. Are there anybody else that would like to make comments?
I just wanted to say that I think that this is something that we should discuss. So if the workshop is the right agenda avenue, then we should definitely set something up for a workshop discussion. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Richardson, thank you. Okay, outside of that number-one Children's Service Council topic that we will discuss at the, I want that done as soon as possible at a workshop, but we do have all of the other committees here, and usually and normally what we do is everyone continues on their committee unless they want to get off that particular committee or want to make a suggestion as to serving on another committee. So this time, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Are there any, anyone on the board deciding now that you would like to get off of a committee? Please let me know now. Okay, seeing that everybody seems to want to continue on their committee, we do have Mr. Sanders as well. Are you okay with the committees you're serving on?
I am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sanders. All right, so with that being said, we're going to move on to our date, time, and place of regular board meetings, and we will focus on the school board meeting schedule. I will entertain a motion and a second to approve the board's annual meeting schedule of one regular meeting, business meeting, on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM, and continue the one work session on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 AM in the boardroom, exceptions being on November the 23rd and December the 28th work sessions. They will be canceled, and a special work session meeting will be scheduled on December the 7th, 2021, at 9:00 AM pertaining to redistricting. So I will now call for a motion and approve for the board meeting annual meeting schedule at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Ms. Harley. We will continue as is, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion here carries five zero. All right, at this time, we will adjourn our organizational-
I'm sorry to butt in, Dr. Mills. I was just wondering, for the current board committee assignments 2021, that looks like an action item, do you need a motion and a second and to vote on those appointments?
Well, let's go ahead and do a motion and second, attorney, okay?
Okay, sorry to butt in there.
That's fine, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to take the current board committee assignments for 2021 as presented.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to accept as it is the committees from Mr. Troy Ingersoll, and we have a second from Mr. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Attorney Shadock.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to turn the, the rest of the meeting, the corporate annual membership, over to Mr. Superintendent Wayne Jen as our corporate secretary.
I call the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation annual membership meeting to order with all members being present, including Ms. Debbie Holly, Mr. Troy Ingersoll, Mr. Jack Kelly, Dr. Donna Mills, and Ms. Jennifer Richardson. All five of the St. Lucie County School Board members shall serve as the sole and ex-officio members of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation. I call for a motion and a second to approve the appointment of the members of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio board of directors of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? No opposed, carries unanimously. That meeting is adjourned. I now call the School Board Leasing Corporation Board of Directors meeting to order. I call for a motion and a second to name the chairman of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio chairman of the Board of Directors of the St. Lucie School Board Leasing Corporation, and the vice chairman of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio vice chairman of the Board of Directors of the corporation.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed, motion passes five zero. I now call for a motion and a second to name the chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex-officio president of the corporation, the vice chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex-officio vice president of the corporation, and the secretary of the School Board of St. Lucie County as the ex-officio secretary slash treasurer of the corporation. Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion is made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. That meeting is adjourned. I turn it back over to you, Dr. Mills.
Okay. At this time, we will now call our November 9th, Tuesday, board meeting, the regular meeting, 2021, to order. And I want to say thank you for everyone that's in our attendance here in the building as well as those that are watching media channels and et cetera for this board meeting. We welcome all of you and are glad you are in attendance. At this time, we're going to ask you to please stand again for our pledge allegiance. Directly after, we will recite our kids-at-home pledge again. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice.
You may standing, please. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Please be seated, thank you. Our next agenda item is our public hearing. We will now open up the public hearing. And this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed approval of a charter with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning and St. Lucie County, Inc. At this time, we are going to open it up for comments. Are there anyone here that would like to come to the podium and comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
Recommend that the board approve the charter with Florida High School for Accelerated Learning as submitted.
Superintendent has made his recommendation. May I hear a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This motion carries five zero. Special order of business is next. Superintendent Jen, I turn this portion of the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call on Ms. Lydia Martin, and she has some recognitions for this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board member Superintendent Jen. At this time, I'd like to invite Heather Clark, Director of Student Services, to provide you with some information about our PBIS program and our model schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Jen. This evening, we have the honor of recognizing 31 of our St. Lucie Public Schools as positive behavior intervention and supports model schools of resilience. This is a special year. Resilience, by definition, is the ability to adjust, to change, or to return to one's original shape after being pulled, stretched, or bent. I think that we all agree that each of our schools have shown tremendous resilience over the past two years. To achieve model school recognition during the 2021 school year, schools met specific criteria outlined by the University of South Florida. Schools were required to demonstrate innovative and creative, functional ways to implement PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Framework, both in the virtual setting and in brick and mortar, to improve the social, emotional, and behavioral health of students and their academic outcomes. An example of those improved outcomes are active student engagement. We have seen a significant decrease in office discipline referrals as well as in-school and out-of-school suspensions. Though our school teams couldn't be with us here today, the 31 schools are displayed before you. Each of our schools received a banner with this recognition as well as plaques delivered to their schools and individual celebrations. They have worked very, very hard to really implement PBIS and make it part of their school culture and their environment. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the people that support this project. First, Mr. Tomlinson, our executive director of ESC and Student Services, for his steadfast leadership. Our district PBIS team, we have here that work at the district to support our schools with training, with implementation of the project, and provide technical assistance, conduct classroom observations when they're necessary, and support our teachers on the ground. We have here Katherine Hegkey, Kristen Gerald, Mr. Dave Kincaid, Shelley Welby, and Robert O'Neill. So we would like to extend our gratitude to them for their work, their efforts as well. And finally, Mrs. Robin Vanover, who supports our project through the University of South Florida, who was not able to be here with us this evening. We would like to say congratulations to all 31 of our schools, and thank you for this, this time today.
And we do thank each of our PBS schools of model schools, and thank you so much for your hard work. Mr. Tomlinson, we thank you for your work as well in overseeing that program. At this time, we're going to move right into, oh, no, I'm sorry. This is, we're still doing our, our special reports.
Yes, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. James Abbott to the podium. He is a retired Microsoft finance employee, and he, in conjunction with Microsoft, have donated $25,000 to purchase computer hubs for the high schools in Port St. Lucie. These computer hubs will truly enhance the teaching and learning environment at those schools. This donation was facilitated by Teresa Bishop and the Roundtable of St. Lucie. So congratulations for your hard work, and thank you so much for donation. And Mr. Abbott, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. And I'd also like to thank again Teresa Bishop and David Pickett, who, without their help, this money would have never reached this school district. So, if I may, I would like to share why I made this contribution. I spent my high school years in foster care. I was destined to have a difficult life. When we went into the system, no school would take us because school had already started. And they felt we needed to be held back. Finally, a school was found that thought we could catch up, and thanks to that high school, some of the teachers, and my foster parents, I was able to graduate on time, go to college, and, and though it took me 15 years to get through college, I never gave up. And because of that high school and those teachers, I became a CPA, obtained a job at Microsoft. I feel fortunate that I spent the last 20 years there, and thanks to Microsoft, I was able to give back to that high school and thank them for all they did for me. I thought about donating an additional $25,000 to that high school, but then, after speaking with my wife, Eileen, we decided since we're now living in Florida, we should help the community we live in. I'm glad to, to see that money help teachers and share technology, and it's my way or our way of thanking them for being a teacher. I also want students to know that it may be tough for some of you, but with the help of your high school and your teachers, you can become successful and achieve your dreams as I have done. Thank you.
Board members, if you'd like to come up front, we'll get a photo. These are truly exceptional employees that we'd like to take an opportunity to recognize. First, we have a dynamic duo of Eve Joseph and Shanika Ingram, a bus driver and bus aide. These individuals noticed a small unintended child in the middle of the road on one of their morning routes. They escorted the child back to their home along with another small child that was standing in the driveway. They waited, they called 911 and waited for them to arrive. When they arrived, 911 was able to search the home where no adult was present. Their alert, thoughtful, and caring actions exemplify the spirit of St. Lucie Public Schools and the best of human nature. They are truly deserving of a STAR award. Thank you to both of those individuals. Next, we have Marcy Lucky, who was nominated by Rose Abul, who is a retired custodial area manager. Her son Doug is a site maintenance worker at Floresta, and since Doug's father, Rose's husband, passed away, it has been very difficult on the family. His mom had been telling him that something was wrong with him, they needed to get checked out by the doctor, but of course, Doug refused since he was a grown man and didn't want his mom telling him what he needed to do. However, the principal, Ms. Lucky, also noticed that something was not right with Doug. And finally, last spring, she sent him home, and leveling told him not to come back until he got checked out. He did not have a choice then and immediately went to the emergency room. The doctors ran multiple tests and couldn't believe some of the results. The doctor told Doug he was lucky he went for treatment when he did because the alternative would have been very bad. Rose says she cannot thank Ms. Lucky enough for her caring and concern about her son. If it hadn't been for Principal Lucky, her son might not be here today. Now with the proper treatment, Doug is back to his old self and was just named School Related Employee of the Year at Floresta. So thank you, Ms. Lucky. Next, we have Joelle Saint-Dix, who was nominated by Principal Susan Seal. Joelle is an ESOL compliance specialist in the Office of Teaching and Learning. She has been instrumental in the support of their ESOL students at Performance Base. She builds rapport with them, which resulted in an increase in attendance and academic performance. Furthermore, she also communicates regularly with the leadership team by sharing strategies and interventions to implement a support for the students to support their overall success. And Ms. Seal and her team are very thankful for her ongoing assistance, so congratulations, Ms. Saint-Dix. Finally, we have Belinda Corey, who was nominated by Principal Patty Galloway. Recently, OCAMIC was stumped on an important FTE documentation issue, and they reached out to Belinda for assistance. When presented with the problem, she knew that she was challenged by this puzzle. She spent her evening solving the problem and called the data specialist the first thing the next morning with a solution, and in fact, it was the correct solution. first thing the next morning with a solution. And in fact, it was the correct solution. She devoted the better part of her day to assisting the data specialist to clean up any remaining outside issues, outside issues prior to the FTE deadline. The data specialist position is very challenging, especially since there aren't any others in the same role on each campus. That coupled with being a new data specialist can be daunting. So, thank you, Belinda Corey, for giving her time to assist the new data specialist. Congratulations. And that concludes our STAR awards for this evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving right along to our ESOL report, E-A-S-L report. Is Mr. Freeman or someone to represent?
There's no one here, Madam Chair.
Miss who?
There's no one here.
There's no one here this evening, okay. So, we'll move right along to CWA, and I don't think there's anyone here from there that, as well. Is there anyone here? Okay, I know Ms. Vickers said she would not be able to make it, but Ms. Vickers do, did call and express how thankful CWA employees, the employees of CWA, how thankful they were that they're going to be considered to be able to get that raise. They appreciate that very much. All right, and now we will call our Youth Advisory Council, Mr. Backer. And I saw you out there. And now, Mr. Backer. I have read that you are our scholar representative, our U.S. Presidential Scholar Representative for St. Lucie County Public Schools in the area of academics. Wow. And what I read, I believe currently, you're like six point something, grade point average?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Wow, we are so proud of you, young man, and so grateful that you have started, you have founded this organization, one of the founders of the Youth Advisory Council for here for St. Lucie County Public Schools. You are a dynamic young man, and we look forward to hearing many great things coming out of your life. Would you please give us your report at this time?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, School Board members, and Superintendent Jen. Our report this month will be relatively brief as we await our inaugural meeting. Formers, the inaugural meeting of the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council will be held on November 16th at 3:30 PM here in the St. Lucie Public Schools' School Board Room. We are excited to welcome our first cohort of council members from Acosta District for the Youth Advisory Council. The Youth Advisory Council will provide the St. Lucie School Board and district personnel with a student perspective on district-wide issues and serve as the primary liaison between students and district administration. I want to express a profound thank you to School Board Member Holly and Mr. Mayo from Treasure Coast High School, who will serve as the faculty advisors/ sponsors to the Youth Advisory Council. Through eight months of organizational proceedings, they have unconditionally dedicated their efforts and time to bring this idea to fruition. This past year has shown me, as well as our greater community, that the phrase "each child every day" exceeds daily progression to academic achievement, but also being persistently responsive to the concerns of our students. This council and its continued support is a testament to our school district's student-centered approach as it values our youth, not just as students, but as humans being capable of self-reasoning. Lastly, on behalf of the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, I would like to congratulate Attorney Shadok on her selection as a School Board Attorney. We look forward to your leadership and expertise. As always, thank you to the School Board for the opportunity to speak before you all, and we look forward to updating you all of the inaugural meeting at the December School Board Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backer. Okay, moving right along to our consent agenda. And before we go into that, though, I want to remind everyone that there are no more speakers' requests will be accepted at this point. Okay, I need to have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingasol?
Second.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. Kelly, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Superintendent Jen, we will receive your recommendation.
Recommend, the board approved the consent agenda as submitted.
Board members, before we receive that recommendation, are there any items that you wish to remove for separate discussion or vote? Ms. Richardson?
Yes, please. I would like to, for, not necessarily for discussion, if there's none, but the, the growth management, I think it's 12, I would like to just pull that, please.
Growth management, 12. Okay, we will pull that. Are you asking for separate vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we will have a separate vote on item 12, growth management. Okay, and before we, we do, do you want any discussion? Ms. Richardson, would you like any discussion on that, or just a separate vote? Any discussion or just separate vote?
Or separate vote, yeah.
Okay, no discussion?
We can have a discussion if we want to.
Madam Chairman, once you have a vote and a second, then there'll be discussion once, once you have a first and a second.
There's a discussion?
Yeah, on that particular item?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay, so give, someone give me a, give me your vote, please, your motion and second?
I'll accept the consent.
Okay, who seconded?
Could you state what we're voting?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to vote on the consent agenda.
No.
With the exclusion of item number?
12.
Yeah, we can, we can do that first. Let's do that first, and then we'll go to discussion for item 12 then. Okay, Ms. Ingasol, you just?
I vote on, I move, I accept the consent agenda with the exception of 12.1.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am.
And second, anyone second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, item 12, can we open that up for discussion, Ms. Richardson?
Okay, thank you. So, it's not necessarily for a discussion, I'm just with item 12. Mr. Jen, I'd like to ask, can I, is this when we ask a question? Mr. Jen, I just wanted to clarify that the, the area for the high school is solidified to be in that cross-town Verona area.
Correct, as was, everything was presented to the School Board on the workshop on September 28th.
All right, that's what I wanted to, to clarify, make sure that I was on, I had that understanding. Also, with reference to item number 12, growth management, I don't, for myself, I don't, I have not done my due diligence. I have done some, I've been speaking to staff, but I'm not comfortable right now with, with, with saying yes or no. I'd like the time to do some more research, or do some more questioning, or whatever it is, so that I can do my due diligence and be comfortable. So, if we are voting tonight on, on going ahead or, or solidifying this in etched in stone, then I'm not comfortable with it. And so, that's why I asked to pull it for, for discussion. Or just to make that statement.
Madam Chairman, I feel comfortable about this. We had a workshop about a month and a half ago. I don't, was it September?
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I know that I've, I've seen this for, for years, and I know and understand this document, the Fishkind document. So, I mean, I've, I've, I've seen it year after year. So, I, I feel comfortable with this. I don't mind making a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation on consent agenda, item number 12.1. So, that's, I'll make my recommendation there.
Okay, a recommendation has been made in that area.
I'll second the motion.
And it has been second to accept the superintendent's recommendation on that item 12, growth management. So, at this time, we will do a, somebody say something?
I was going to say something. We can go ahead, we're in discussion, but go ahead.
I, I, I do, Madam Chair, Mrs. Richardson, the, when you say you don't feel comfortable, I'm, I'm not comfortable, like you just asked about the school. You, you're aware that I, my opinion, I don't want the school there. I want it in a different spot. This is, this is a five-year plan. I've been through five or six five-year plans, and they're only projections, they're only an idea that we have to do. And believe me, it's going to change. I mean, it could change tomorrow, it changed at the next meeting, it could change in two years. I mean, good example, Cross Town Parkway, we had a five-year plan 20 years ago, and then we had another five-year plan. And we thought we'd be driving on it and over the bridge in 2010. 20 years later, we were driving on it, because things change constantly. You're getting, you get a new governor, you get a new county commission, I mean, and they oversee our, there's so many things that could happen. But whether or not all that building is going to go on out in that area where I prefer the school, because when the city did that and the annexation, that's where it was proposed. We talked to the School Board at that time, and that's where all the acreage is, and there's, it'd be a great place. It also is a K through A. Other than that, there are schools that have to be updated. We know that up, up north, you know, in North County, and it might be a different pot of money. We don't know what we're going to get or where it's going to come from. So, this is only a procedural plan that we have to have and are required. So, there'll be a lot more meetings, discussions, and things, and, and the things that you and I are uncomfortable with, we can bring them up and, and bring them at that time. But this is, we, we did have a big, I think we discussed it, and then we had another, our, our whole meeting was just about the five-year plan, wasn't it? The last, the last one we had before the meeting upstairs. So, I'm comfortable with it. And again, you can, there'll be many chances for you to express your concerns.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to affirm that all of these plans are in alignment with our concurrency plan. Is that correct, Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am.
And the concurrency plan is done in conjunction with the entire state as the population grows and moves in?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, are we concluded with discussion at this time? If we are, we will move forward with that vote for the recommendation, that, that the motion and second that was made to, to accept the item 12 as submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries 4-1. All right, at this time, we will go right into our informational reports. Okay, board members, you have the informational reports on the charter schools' financial. Charter schools' financial statements are presented to the board for informational purposes only. No approval of a charter school's financial statement is required. This presentation, acceptance of charter school financial statements is to demonstrate compliance with Section 1002.33, the Florida statute. So, it is for informational purposes only. Superintendent, reports? Did we miss anything?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few things this evening. Number one, we, on our webpage, it's the, the main banner, we're going to be offering beginning November 12th, I believe that's Friday, COVID-19 vaccine for five and older at the sites that were listed, Manatee K-8, Northport K-8, CA Moore, and the FCHC Lincoln Park Center, which is on Avenue G. And there are also, we'll also list other sites that are across the county, most of your Publix grocery stores, most of your CVS, most of your Walgreens, some of the other pharmacies as well. We'll also be giving this shout-out. It's important that the parents will need to, I'm, I'm pretty sure that the parents need to accompany the students that are there, that are underaged, and this is a great opportunity. We're doing this partnership through, through the Florida Healthcare Network. I hope I got that correct. And so, we're partnering up with them. So, we'll kick that into high gear. We've already sent information out at home with our calls and, and via social media, and we'll continue to do that. So, that's an, an opportunity for students and their families to take advantage of that, if they choose to do that. Also, as you've been seeing, our numbers have been dropping drastically. In fact, today, we had no cases of adults or staff members, and the trend has been going in the downward path, as it has across the entire state and country. And we're going to monitor this up until Thanksgiving, and if it goes in that continued direction, then after Thanksgiving, we're probably going to make mask optionals for staff members as well. They'll remain optional with parent consent for students, but we would make it optional for staff members. But that would be, we're going to continue to monitor for the next two weeks, and then make that determination right after the, the Thanksgiving break. I want to share this. This is great news for the school district. It's called the IDEA Annual Determination. And what that is, this is the Individuals with Disability Education Act. It requires the states to make annual determinations on the local LEA, that's us, and meeting requirements that are set up. And there's four categories. You can either get meets requirement, needs assistance, needs intervention, or needs substantial intervention. And for 2021, our St. Lucie Public Schools has what's called meets, meets the requirements, and that's the highest designation that a district can have. And it means that we are meeting or exceeding the state performance indicators, and I want to read these to the board and to the public, that we have no disproportionate discipline for students with disabilities. Our graduation rate for students with disabilities, it's not disproportionate. There's a decrease in the dropout rate for students with disabilities. There's no disproportionate representation in disability categories. The percentage of children evaluated prior to their third birthday, percentage of children evaluated within the 60-day timeframe, we're compliant transition of IEPs for students with disabilities. We have the submission of valid, reliable, and timely data, and the submission of valid and reliable data related to students participating in access point standards and FSAA. So, I want to recognize Bill. I'd like for Bill to stand up and any of his team that's here, because this is quite an honor for the school district, and it's very difficult. They take the leadership role in this, and in this really, the ground, the boots level is in our school centers, and so our schools have done a remarkable job with that. And this is quite, we learned of this this morning. So, Bill was quite excited to share this with us, and so it was perfect timing. Also, I think three of you were there at the best places to work, and we received that honor again for the fifth consecutive year. And also, Dr. Rafael Sanchez, who's back there in the corner, received the HR Executive of the Year for the entire county. So, congratulations to Rafael. Next, we have, I believe, our Schools of Excellence, and you can see our Schools of Excellence, which is Fairlon, Lincoln Park, Mosaic, Palm Point, and Westgate. That's a designation from the State Board of Education. If the school's percentage points earned in school calculation is in the 80th percentile or higher, which was very difficult to do in the pandemic year, this program was created in 2017. So, congratulations to those schools. Nextly, next, this is Mr. Perry, Dr. Perry, Kevin will be all excited about, and we all are, that all of our schools received the music performance assessments. We received superiors at Central, Westwood, Centennial, PSL High, and Treasure Coast High School. So, congratulations to those schools, to those students, to those band directors and, and their parents for a job. Well done. And then, speaking of music, Dr. Jack Kelly, Mr. Kelly, and myself were invited, Christian and, and some of the students out at Treasure Coast High School invited us over there. And if we can, we have a video there that, if we can show it, this is, I was looking for Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly was playing with the band. What? What he was asking the student there, he was whispering to the student. He wanted to know how much he was going to get paid for that gig. So, but it was great, and we had a great, we had a wonderful time in the classroom. And I'll let him talk about that later on under, under comments, but he did a fantastic time.
I just want to mention that was a five-string bass, and somebody says you want to sit in, and they hand you an instrument that you never played before. It's, you know, a five-string bass is different from a four-string. Some guitar players out there know what I'm talking about. But I still had a good time. There's a great band.
Very good, and I appreciate that. We had, we had a good time with the students and answering questions, and look forward to going back again with them. Madam Chair, that completes my comments.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Jen. Attorney Molly Shadok? Attorney Molly Shaddock, we welcome you on this board as our board attorney. You had high score with all of us. And we look forward to your help in the area that we need in law and policy and all of that. So, thank you so much. Attorney Harold was with us for many years. And he's got some big shoes to fit. But we are more than confident that you will be able to fit those shoes and, because you've been under his tutelage for a long time with this board. And so, welcome. Do you have any comments that you would like to make at this time?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Jent. I just want to thank you for the warm welcome. And it's such a pleasure to be working with you all again. I'm really looking forward to it, so thank you.
And she already made a great catch tonight, already.
All right, you're going to have your chance to talk, Mr. Kelly again. In fact, let's start out with you since you're making comments. School board members' reports are next.
We had an excellent visit with Christian Bach out at Treasure Coast High School. And met everybody, went to, I can't even remember how many different classes, but I was just so impressed with the school, the layout. One thing I did notice, Mr. Jent, is there's a lot of children in that high school. What do we have, 3,200 and how many in, that school has got? That's got to be our biggest.
That school's around, I believe it's around 2,800 in that ballpark.
Wow.
It's a very large high school.
Talking about building another high school, I guess a lot of them would come from there. Other than that, I just want to, that award that we just won, sir, Mr. Jent, back to you again, the IDEA Award, that we understand, is that the first time we won that award?
No, it's a designation, it's really not an award, it's a designation. Bill, if you want to come up to the, or you want to, yeah, just come on up to the mic there.
I'm right, because it's a big deal. I'm looking at all the requirements and that was a big deal. I'm very proud of you, sir.
It is a big deal for us.
It's a big deal.
It really is.
It's a big deal for St. Lucie County Schools.
Yeah, and as an ESE Director, you sort of hold your breath every year waiting on that designation to determine whether you're going to meet those requirements or be in an intervention phase. Luckily, out of the last six years, we've met the requirements four times. We would have met the fifth time, but we had one issue with discipline one year. But other than that, out of six years, we've met it four times. So, we're very proud of the work that goes on. I have a wonderful team of people that work with me. And the administrators and the teachers and our support staff in our schools are the ones that are actually doing all of the really tough work every day to make sure our kids with disabilities are getting the services that they need. So, thank you very much.
Great job, congratulations. The only other thing I want to say is I am, this is a year for you and Jennifer, for you and me, this is our first year. We just completed our first year and it's quite different than I thought it was going to be. You know, I've even learned to put up with Troy. I get along with him now. He talks to me and he even says hi in the hallways. That's been going on for a whole year. I'm sure people know that we, because somebody did ask me once, are you and Troy? I said, no, we're pretty good buddies, don't always agree maybe, but. But the one thing I want to say about staff, we just had the best places to work. And staff was there and Rafael won that big award. I'm so proud of him, but our staff, they're so professional. Especially that day, I was so looking at everyone else and all the other award winners there. Our staff is so professional, just everything about them, everything they did, the way they smiled, the way they talked, their demeanor. They look like educators or something, I don't know. They're just a great staff and it's been a pleasure this first year working with everyone. And there's always problems, but I just, the staff is just, was beyond my expectations of how good the staff is that we work with. And that's the last time I'll say that. The rest of the year, we're going to find all the things that are wrong. And that's all I want to say, had a great first year and thank you. And thank all the teachers, everyone, everyone that put up with everything that we've had for the last year, over a year. And again, the light's there at the end of the tunnel. So, get vaccinated, that's always got to say that to you. Thank you and congratulations, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. So, I'm just going to say ditto to what Mr. Kelly said just now. I totally agree with him. It's been an awesome first year, nothing like what I expected myself. I'd like to welcome you, thank, welcome you here. And Madam Chair, congratulations. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for the excellent job that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Ms. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am, congratulations again, Dr. Mills and Molly. Just a few things, just to let the community know. We started a key club at Centennial. They've met for the first time and they'll be meeting for the next couple of weeks, couple of months before they get their official charter, probably February. Central's key club is now up to 189 students. So, that's a pretty, pretty strong key club. The strongest one's in Miami with 400, but I think we're one of the, one of the top key clubs in the state. Last but not least, the Education Foundation is having an event this Saturday. If you're looking to, it's a virtual event. If you're interested in helping fund scholarships for children, for teachers, it's an opportunity and a fun way to give back to your community. Thank you so much.
Ms. Harley? I'd like to thank Ms. Harley for her chairmanship the last couple of years. You definitely did take us through some challenging times and we appreciate you very much. And there's times when I come to you and have come to you and asked you for advice and chairmanship of running the meetings. And I just thank you for your mentorship and for your hard work the last couple of years. We want to acknowledge that and thank you. Also, I wanted to mention, it's the Jent, Superintendent Jent, I believe that the Health Network that is partnering with us with the vaccines, the name is Florida Health Community Network. It's a community word in that network.
Correct, correct.
At this time, we are going to go right into our scheduled speakers. Ms. Dale Galliano?
There is one more item we have to take action on under school board member reports.
School board member reports?
Mm-hmm, number 20.2, the request for travel.
Yes, I'm looking for that now, where is it?
Be awkward if you guys made the motion.
Okay, okay, I'm going to call for a motion in a second to confirm the travel to attend the 76th Annual FSBA Joint Conference on November 30th through December 3rd. This conference will be attended by Ms. Harley and myself. And it will be on, it will end on December 3rd, 2021. It is official school board business and said travel complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. So, I will call for a vote right now.
So, approval?
So, moved by Mr. Ingersoll?
Second.
Second by, I think I, Mr. Kelly, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Okay, Ms. Dale Galliano, Galliano, can you please come up to the podium here? And please state your name and your address for us. And please note that you have five minutes allotted and that our attorney, Ms. Shaddock, will let you know when you're close to your time. It's up.
Thank you, I'm Dale Galliano, 696 Southwest Violet. I got a email days ago to find out that this book that I am going to still continue on letting you know has been put under review. It has been pulled from the six schools, saving 18,000 children from having to deal with it, but it has not been banned as is yet. So, you are going to hear until it is banned. Quote, page 163, "Removing himself from her was so painful to him, he cut it short and snatched his genitals out of the dry harbor of a vagina."
Ms. Galliano, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but let me, let me, Ms. Galliano, let me interrupt you for one minute. We don't need the specifics because we have pulled that book. We have agreed with you, we agree with you 100% that that book was inappropriate and we have removed it from the shelves. So, please, if you want to talk and speak regarding the book, but please do not read it. It, you are completely, was completely correct on that one. Thank you so much for bringing it to our attention.
I'll carry on with other parts that are on other things.
Yes, ma'am.
On these other books, as far as that we will be going through, I have an appointment on Monday. But we also have to realize that the psychological damage of unsuspecting, inimpressionable children's minds, here is where you're responsible for the well-being and futures of our children and grandchildren. This book and others are dressed up, if coming of age, not history, not anything of which they can base fact and truth on. It's a fiction, these are fictional books. Burning down family homes, DIY on how to kill a cat, fathers raping daughters who get pregnant and there's miscarriages in these books, getting beaten by their mothers, everything that you can imagine from abuse, sexual intimidation, manipulation, trickery, coercion of minors for sex. With solid explicit narratives in these books of sexual conduct, incest, and pedophilia. Quite a book, quite a number of books. What age child do you think needs to know this and why? To what benefit or understanding that you have here for them? You're robbing their youth of innocence and dooming them to possible psychological damage that will last them a lifetime, yes, a lifetime, of damage that can be found in psychological clinical research and papers. The Journal of Sexual Medicine shows how early access to pornography is directly connected to rape, pedophilia, S and M, peeping toms, adult pornography, addiction, rage, aggression, and more. Our prisons are full of it. You think these things start at the age 25, 30, you're wrong. It starts when an innocent child and a mind is exposed to things they don't have the understanding or the life experience to understand. The very first thing, that the county is just fine with this, psychologically damaging and unsuspecting and unimpressionable children, inimpressionable children's minds. Here, where you're responsible for being the future of our children. I am, I had other quotes here, which is not right, that you won't let me read. But bring me my, since I have four minutes here, I will read another portion, another portion that I've been told already that I'm not allowed to.
How many more minutes does she have?
Since I'm not allowed my three minutes anymore with my constitutional rights, I will read this instead. There is fiction and not history in books throughout. There are different things that are putting into our children's minds. There is also CRT in many of these books. Now, I don't mean to say much as far as the fact, but three of you did come before a group here in this county and said there was no CRT in this county and that all state laws were being followed.
There are 15 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Books in this county have got too much sexual explicit things. I am going to work very hard in order to get all of them out. We have 22 of the 44 books that are legally wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galliano. At this time, we will adjourn.